Get to your question, please go to Garamendi, that's G I A R A M E N D I dot house dot G O V slash contact and submit them there. You can do that any day, anytime. So many know that we've been collecting stories of Trump's unconscionable and unconstitutional actions since his term began, began, excuse me. If you or someone you know has been affected, please share your stories at Garamendi dot house dot gov slash contact. And it's, and don't worry, I'm going to put this in the chat, 2025 federal financial assistance freeze. We are gathering as many stories as possible to draw attention to the harm caused by the Trump administration. To make sure you have the most up to date information from our office, please ensure that you follow us across all of our media platforms, including to receive the congressman's weekly e-newsletter, please go to Garamendi dot house dot gov. You will see a pop-up and fill in your information in that pop-up. That's how you can get information for events just like this and local information that you can use. You can also follow the congressman on Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, and Blue Sky by searching him at at Rep Garamendi and selecting follow. Lastly, if you or someone you know living in Solano or Concha Costa counties is having difficulty with a federal agency, such as Social Security, Medicare, or the IRS, his staff is here to help. To seek assistance from the team, please visit Garamendi dot house dot gov, scroll down to the Action Center and select casework privacy release form. Please fill out all requested information and a member of the staff will get back to you shortly. We appreciate your time and want to hear from you. Again, if you did not hear us at the beginning, if you have a question for the congressman, please put in the chat and I will read it aloud. And without further ado, I'd like to welcome Congressman John Garamendi to address you with a short introduction.
Bradley, thank you so very much and for all of you that are on this video webinar, thank you. We really need to share and understand what's happening here in Washington. I suspect that you have been following much of the chaos and the extraordinary destruction that Elon Musk, operating under the authority of the President Trump, is unleashing on America. He likes to say it's all about the deep state in Washington DC. Well, it's not, it's about every part of America being dramatically and negatively impacted. And we need to talk about that. We need to understand what the effects are, we need to understand as best we can why they're doing it. And then we're going to have to push back, we're going to have to resist. And I really want to spend my time tonight talking about the resistance, what you can do, what I am doing, and what we will need to do in the days and months ahead. What we need to understand is that essentially Trump hates government. And he put in charge a fellow that is known for disruption and destruction. You only take a look at what Elon Musk did with the former, with his former company X and others. It's part of the strategy of the tech world to destroy and then rebuild. Well, maybe you can do that if you're talking about Twitter. But if you're talking about the US government, you're talking about essential services. Let's go through some of that. Yesterday, the Republicans pushed out of the House of Congress a continuing resolution. That's a funding bill for the rest of the 25 year up until September. Well, you think that's a good thing because the government would stay open? Well, yes, that's important and it would do that. But what cost to you and to our republic? What would it cost? Well, there's a few cuts in there, a $23 billion cut for the Veterans Administration. And that will be on top of the 83 million, 83,000 employees that will soon be fired at the Veterans Administration. At the very same time that we would expect the Veterans Administration to begin the processing of new applicants, veterans who have been harmed in the burn pits and in other exposure to chemical weapons or chemical releases during their services. This is the PAC Act. And it's going to take personnel, we have probably well over 200,000 veterans that have already attempted to get into that system so that they can get their medical care, cancers and other issues appropriately dealt with. So how does that work? It is an assault on our veterans. We have, and you take a look at the other portions of that continuing resolutions. There is a, well, I learned years and years ago, you've got to read the details on all legislation. And I did, and I'm going, oh my God, this is written to turn over the total Congress's appropriation processes to the President. It's wide open. Everything the President wants to do to issue another executive order would be allowed. And most of the lawsuits that have been successfully prosecuted against his actions would be negated and could not go forward because he's given total control of the appropriation processes. You don't know, you can't really understand it unless you read it and go through, what's this all about? What's this clause? Why are they pulling all this money into one big pot and basically eliminating this specific appropriations that are, that are common? There's more than a thousand of those specific appropriations. For example, in the Bay Area dredging programs, there's a specific appropriation appropriations for dredging. But that is now lumped together with many, many other appropriations. None of them specify thereby giving Trump total control of the money that is available. So we've got to vote no on that. We must maintain our congressional authority here, particularly in the face of what Trump has done, even though the law does not allow it and certainly the Constitution doesn't either. I want to give you one more example, then I want to get into questions. There are two different appropriation things underway. One is the continuing resolution for the remainder of this year until September, the end of September. And that's what I was just talking about. The second is next year's appropriation. And that begins on September, first of October of 2025. And that is a major challenge for America. What it essentially does is to totally rip apart the Medicaid program. The Republicans expect to get $800 billion over the next 10 years of savings from Medicaid. So if you're a senior or if you have a parent that's in a nursing home or an extended care facility, if you are a family with a low income, you're probably getting healthcare through the California program. Those, the money for those programs will disappear. And healthcare services that are presently paid by the federal government to the state government and then made available to low income, to a handicap, to seniors, will not be available. It's an $800 billion cut on the Medicaid program and what we call in California Medi-Cal. And the Affordable Care Act is very much a part of this. If you're getting healthcare from one of the many, many clinics that are out there, that funding will not be available under the Republican proposal, which really guts and eliminates the Medi-Cal program. There are so many other things to talk about, perhaps your questions will go there. If not, I'll bring them up along the way. But I want you to know there's a better alternative. Instead of a massive tax cut for the super wealthy, which is in that large, that long-term appropriation bill, where the wealthy will get some trillion dollars, 90% of a trillion dollar tax cut. We have a better idea. We think that the working men and women of America, those who have a family income of less than $400,000, they deserve a tax break. And the super wealthy deserve to pay their fair share. So no, we will not support a tax cut for the super wealthy. But we're certainly going to make sure that the working men and women, the men and women that are on the construction, the teachers, the nurses, the truck drivers, they deserve a tax cut. And they also deserve childcare as well as other issues so that they will have the ability to support their families and face the inflation that still is existing in our communities. So with that Bradley, I'll turn it back to you and let's take those questions.
Thank you very much Congressman. And for everyone who just joined us, if you have a question for the congressman, go ahead and put that in the chat and we will be reading them aloud. If you submit a question and we don't get to you for some reason, please go to the congressman's website, Garamendi dot house dot gov, click contact and you can write in a message to the congressman and get a response from his staff. Sir, we have well over 100 questions for you, so I think we won't get to many of them. But we'll try to combine as much of them into individual questions as well. Comes from Kristy L. She says, how will we protect Social Security? How will we protect Medicare and Medicaid? Sorry for three questions, but they're all very important.
They certainly are. I didn't talk about Social Security, but certainly Musk has been very, very clear. He thinks Social Security is a Ponzi scheme or a crime act. It's not. It's something that every one of us that had, that has paid a wage or a salary, we pay into it from our very first paycheck until we retire. And for those that retire, you may still be paying into Social Security because you have a part-time job. It is one of the fundamental programs that was established by FDR way, way back during the effort of the American government to pull out of the Depression. It is fundamental. And we need to be very, very much aware that the Republicans attempted to terminate Social Security back in the George Bush II administration. Fortunately, we fought back and prevented that from happening. They've continued to try to terminate Social Security, turn it over to the Wall Street investors. They claim they can make more money in playing the Wall Street game. Well, if you want to run that risk, then probably you have a 401K. But Social Security is your bedrock. Now, I spoke earlier about Medi-Cal and Medicare, the federal program, which funds a good portion of the Medi-Cal program in California. I won't go back through that except to say it is fundamental. It is the principal healthcare for the elderly in nursing homes, extended care for home care services, for those who are elderly or impaired, as well as for those who are at low income. It's also the clinic programs that we have throughout California. We cannot allow the Republicans to destroy that. They're going to go at that immediately with their funding program for the year 2005, which begins in October through 2006 until the end of September 2006. So we're going to fight on this issue and we need you to fight also. I note with great satisfaction that there are demonstrations taking place throughout my district and really throughout the nation. People standing in front of the Social Security office and saying, don't take away my mother's healthcare. Don't take away the Social Security program. You can do that and I encourage you to do it. Do it legally, no, no offensive actions, obey the laws, take your signs, stand peacefully, take the videos, put them up on social media, wherever it is, and those begin to add up. Also, one thing that you can do on this is if you know a friend or if you live in a district that has a Republican member of Congress, contact them. Just as I've asked you to contact me, have your friends in those districts contact their representatives. And we'll give you the names in Northern California. We have McClintock to the east of Sacramento. We have Kylie in the mountain counties, all the way from Roseville, all the way across the mountains through Tahoe and down. And we have La Mafa up in the northern Sacramento Valley. They're all lining up with Trump. There are solid votes for what Trump wants to do and they need to hear from their constituents, perhaps your relatives that live in those areas and I encourage you to do so. Or maybe you know somebody off in Kansas. Have them contact the Senator as well as the representative in that area and speak their piece. I think I covered the questions Bradley, let's take another one.
Great, thank you sir. An anonymous person in the chat asked, will the recent firings at the VA affect services that veterans can receive?
Absolutely, absolutely. In two different ways, I took this quickly in the opening remarks. The first wave of firings has already taken place. And that's going to have an effect on the availability of services, particularly for someone that's seeking new services. The VA is scheduled by the President to have an 83,000 person reduction in their personnel. And that's going to be a very heavy impact, not only on the ability to get into the system. That's a process, it's not always easy. And by the way, our staff is always helpful on helping you and other veterans get into the system. But if they're short, would it be 90,000 employees? It's going to be tough. We've also added a very significant additional service for veterans. And that is the PAC Act, which deals with chemical exposures. We think about the burn pits, but it is more than that. You may be operating in a, maybe repairing machinery using chemicals and you've been exposed to a cancer-causing chemical. That's going to significantly increase the workload. Also, among those 83,000 are the nurses, the doctors, and the others that provide direct service. Bottom line, Veterans Administration is going to be severely hampered by the action of Musk and Trump.
Thank you sir. We have another question from Paul O. Paul O. asks, what is the congressman's position on the government shutdown?
It shouldn't happen, but it is going to require the Republicans to work with the Democrats. Republicans in the House only have a three-vote advantage. And in the Senate, it is a, again, they have 53 Republican senators. Earlier this day, the Democratic senator said the legislation to keep the government open that passed the House last night is a non-starter. I'm going to go very quickly at this for two reasons. One, there's significant reduction in services, again, for the Veterans Administration, some $23 billion money cut out of the Veterans Administration at a time when they're actually going to need more money to meet their requirements. And most important of all, it gives total power to the President to move money anywhere he wants to. The appropriation process is about 1,000 different specific appropriations. In the military, there's more than 200 specific appropriations for different things. And that's basically what I've been working on for these many years. Same in the transportation infrastructure area, transportation systems, specific appropriations, healthcare, the national parks and so on and so forth. Lumping all of that into one or two or 10 large pots of money and then giving the President to put that money anywhere he wants to, is going to create very significant problems. We have a pretty good indication what the President wants to do from the cuts and the slashing burn that he has been doing. So we should never, ever give up the appropriation process. That is fundamental to our democracy. Otherwise, we have elected a dictator. He has power not only to do his executive orders, but he also would have the power to move the money anywhere he wants to do it. We're not going to do that. So we're a no on that. About an hour and a half ago, Senator Schumer made it clear that the Senate would not approve the House bill. And he has called for a one-month extension. Funding would continue as it has for the last, well, since October 1st, for that one, for that one month. And during that month, he has asked and basically demanded that the Republicans come back to the table, work with the Democrats, and put together a funding program for the remainder of this fiscal year until the end of September. And then we'll take up next year's appropriation, which is actually being worked on now. So government shutdown, we don't want that. I remember full and well, the longest government shutdown was one that Trump did all by himself. He said, I'm not going to sign any legislation unless I can build a 1,800-mile border wall and you give me the money to do it. And we said, well, we'll give you money for certain border wall, but not 1,800 miles. And he said, okay, shut down the government. And that was the longest shutdown ever. He refused to sign the legislation.
Thank you sir. And I'm going to try to combine two questions together that I think are related but are both good points. Cheryl S. asks, is anything being done to combat Trump's abuse of power? And then Raymond S. says, some comments mentioned that Trump's actions are unconstitutional. In your opinion, do you think the courts will block some of Trump's actions?
Excellent question. Thank you very much, Boyd. There are really two pieces to that. There's the here and now, what is actually happening now. The courts are successful, lawsuits are successfully in the courts. And Trump has been stopped, not on everything, but on many of the issues of appropriation. I'm thinking of the foreign aid program in which literally his actions are creating death around the world. People are dying because he's, because of what he did on foreign aid, which is the food program, the Food for Peace program that goes way, way back. So he was, he was blocked from doing that. And that's one of about a dozen, no, actually about 16 lawsuits that have been successfully in the courts where the court said he did not have the power to stop the funding. Now that goes back to Supreme Court of about decision, maybe 30 years ago, that said that the President has to appropriately obey the law. The law is the appropriation law. So they've stopped him. Will it be, none of these have gone to the Supreme Court yet, although I think there will be a success in the Supreme Court. Hopefully they will follow the precedent that's already been set that the President does not have the power to not spend the money that the appropriators, that the Congress has appropriated, line by line. Now, here's the problem. The problem that the House of Representatives Republicans did in the legislation last night, which would continue the funding for the government between now and September and the end of September, has in it specific language authorizing the President to move the money wherever he wants to move it or to not spend it at all. In other words, totally giving up the constitutional power of the Congress to appropriate money and thereby giving the President that power. Now, if you want a dictator, that's exactly how you do it. If you want to have a constitutional democracy, you've got to say no. And that's what we did last night, not one Democrat voted for that. And now Senator Schumer and the Democrats in the Senate have said they will not support that. They want to go back to a clean appropriation, a clean, a continuing spending resolution between now and the end of September and then work on next year's appropriations. That's what we need to do. We cannot, under any circumstance, give the President not only the power of the purse, the money, to put the money wherever he wants to or not at all. We have to also make sure that the lawsuits are protected. And therefore, I'm a solid no vote until that language is no longer in any of these legislations. I will not empower Trump to become a full-on dictator.
Thank you Congressman. And we had several questions relating to your votes, so just wanted to put these two together. How did you vote on both the budget reconciliation bill as well as the continuing resolution?
Excellent question. I think I've covered the continuing resolution, that is the funding between now and the end of September. It's no. My wife Patty says, no bad language, John, so I won't say blank no. But I'm a no vote on that and will continue to be a little no vote until the funding is secure and the language empowering the President to become a dictator is not in that legislation. So that's the continuing resolution. The other one deals with the, the long-term funding. And that would be the funding for the 25, 26 years, which begins October 1st and runs until the end of September, October 26th, excuse me, September 26th. That is coming up. That was the budget resolution. And it has significant problems. First of all, it fully, it will fully fund the enormous tax break for the oligarchs, for the super wealthy, for the billionaires, and a little bit of tax break for everybody else. Here's my take on it. The super wealthy have to pay their fair share. So do not, under any circumstances, continue the 2017 tax break, which created a $4 trillion deficit and a trillion dollars a year went to the top 10% of America's income people and corporations, the 50 largest corporations also simply not paying taxes, giving tax breaks in that bill. That was the 2017 Republican Trump tax bill. Do not extend it. Write new legislation in which people earning, let's say, less than, families earning less than $400,000 a year, they get the tax break. We continue the refundable child tax credit, which is $6,000, which is $6,000 for the first year of life for a family. And the continuation of the child tax credit for the very, very low-income people that are trying to earn a living. The reports just came out on the cost of childcare. Well, that's what we want to deal with here. We want people to be able to work, we want their children to be able to get childcare. And they, and the working men and women, the wage earners, the teachers, the construction workers, the truck drivers and the families that are out there on a wage scale. We want them to be able to have a tax break. But no, no, blank no for the super wealthy. Let them pay their fair share. We already know there's too much income inequality in America. In any case, the final point I want to make on this is that, that continuing resolution, excuse me, not the continuing, the, the setup for the next year's appropriation calls for the budget, calls for Medicaid and other services or other healthcare services to be dramatically cut by at least $800 billion over the 10-year period. So that's about $80 billion a year that would not be available to provide Medicaid services across this nation and would have a significant impact on California. It would basically end the Medi-Cal program in California. And so, no, not going to support that. We will write and work with the Republicans to write a decent, long-term appropriation for the 25, 26 year. And that appropriation should have a tax break for the wage earners, for the middle class, for the working class, but not for the billionaire class. I think I've covered it Bradley, if I didn't, well, let's get on with it.
No, thank you sir. And the chat is very thankful for you giving us a positive and hopeful message of what could be versus just not the negative that we're facing and the defense we're facing. Unfortunately, we have some other defensive questions, but very important ones, which include from Jeremy and Amy. I'm going to put their questions together, which is what happens to our local schools? If the Department of Education is dissolved, how can we stop cuts to our public schools and teachers?
Well, we're going to be right in that. This is today's news. Every day, every day Trump comes up, excuse me, Trump and Musk come up with another devastating blow to our constitutional government, our democracy. Education, I've said this forever, the most fundamental thing in any society is education. If you've got a good, well-educated society, good things will happen. That society will be able to think through, work through and solve the problems of the day. Unfortunately, we do not have that. And we need to be very, very much aware in California, even in the present system with the existing federal government Department of Education, our education system is not satisfactory. Higher education, community colleges, they're pretty good, probably some of that's the best in the nation. But in the K through TEL 12 system and in the pre-K system, we've got real problems. And we need to be aware of that and we need to deal with that. And that is principally state funding, some of it is local, but it's principally And that is principally state funding. Some of it is local, but it's principally state funding, and it has to be addressed. It's an issue for the state, for the governor, as well as for the legislation. Now, the federal government plays a role here in certain areas, particularly in the funding for disability, for students with disability, as well as some of the mental health programs that were desperately needed in the education system. We also find that the federal government does provide some direct funding along those lines. It is not anywhere significant to what the state of California and the local communities are providing presently in the state. There's another piece of this, and that is the student loan programs for higher education are run by the Department of Education by contractors, principally contractors that have been hired to do the paperwork. It appears as though that function may be dissolved. And so, the student loan programs for higher education are likely to be at risk, not only in how to obtain them, but in looking for how to pay it back, how to get relief under certain circumstances from those loan programs. There's an ongoing effort, and whether this will be continued or not, given what the dissolution of the Department of Education would would happen, is that a student loan can be paid off by certain types of public service. And I would encourage people that have the opportunity to work in various public services jobs, Indian healthcare is one such program, even though that may also disappear as a result of these cuts, that you can pay off your student loans in public service jobs. And I think that's really valuable, not only to the individual, but also to the society in that we would have people that would be working in these public service areas. So we don't know exactly what is going to happen in the Department of Education, but it appears to be a gutting of this program. Fifty percent of the workforce has, as of today, been fired. And I don't know how they could possibly do their work. Their goal is actually to eliminate it, and that would have impact all across this nation. There's two other things that are important here, and that is Title IX and Title X, the mental health programs, as well as the programs that require that there be equal access to women in sports and other activities. It goes beyond that, the discrimination that does exist in some areas of the country in educational programs. So those would probably not be enforced. There'd be nobody home to do it. Thank you, Bradley. Next question.
Thank you, sir, and very similar vein, and it may take you pulling out your crystal ball, but David B. asks, what will Trump do to student loans?
Well, I think we need to be aware of what Biden Biden tried to do and did just some partial success on it, and that is to forgive certain student loans. Most of that did not pass the various test. So what will Trump do? I would hope that he would maintain sufficient staff at the Department of Education so that the program can function. There's, I think, nearly a trillion dollars of student loans outstanding. They have to be processed. That's a lot of paperwork. That's a lot of staff work that's going to be necessary just to process that. As I said earlier, some of this is done by contractors. Somebody's got to watch the contractors. So the elimination of the people that have been doing that in the Department of Education is going to create a very chaotic and damaging situation to anybody that wants to gather information, ask about, can I pay off my student loan by doing public service at the local hospital? Well, nobody's going to be able to answer that. Nobody's home. So that's just one example. The other is the new student loans. We don't know. We just don't know. Presumably, the student loan program would continue, although Trump, going back to the appropriation process that I talked about earlier, may have the power in that legislation to simply terminate all new student loans. Would he do it? Well, he's done a lot of crazy, terrible things, so maybe that would be one more that would be that he would undertake. We don't know. It's a very, very important part of the program for higher education. So be aware, watch carefully. I am, and I know that my colleagues are. And it may be one of those things that you want to go down to the local school tomorrow with a sign saying, so what about women in sports? Will my daughter have an opportunity to play sports? That's Title IX. I don't know. We don't know what Trump is going to do. Okay, Bradley, let's move on.
Thank you, Congressman, and a huge shout out to our constituents. We already have just about 500 questions in the chat. We, again, will try to get to as many of them as we can before we need to close down the Zoom for tonight. But if you do not get your question answered, please go to our website, again, garamendi.house.gov and hit Contact Us, and you can submit your question there. You can also always call any of our four offices in Washington, DC, or the three in California to talk to someone live and on the phone. The next question, sir, comes from Jonathan B. Jonathan asks, what can we do about our foreign allies and ensure continuing support for both Ukraine and NATO?
Oh, boy. This is a major, major challenge. We've been talking mostly domestic issues that are in trouble or in jeopardy. Trump has turned 180 degrees. We have been supporting Ukraine since 2014 as a result of the Budapest memorandum. Some thirty years ago, when the Soviet Union dissolved, Ukraine became an independent country, and it had a huge stockpile of nuclear weapons. Ukraine gave up those nuclear weapons in exchange for an assurance that the United States and NATO and European Union would support Ukraine. Well, the moment came in 2014 when Russia took over Crimea and entered the eastern Donbass region of Ukraine. The United States at that point and Europe began to support militarily, military support for Ukraine. I was in Ukraine five years ago, and we were reviewing that support. There was, in fact, a California National Guard unit that was training the Ukrainian soldiers that were then operating on the, in the Donbass region, which had become a frozen a frozen war. And of course, Russia had completely dominated Crimea by that time. Three years ago, Putin did a full-on assault invasion of Ukraine. They attempted to take over Kiev. They drove down a highway from Belarus, trying to get to Kiev to take over the government and then take over the country. Ukraine had sufficient military support from the United States and from certain European countries, together with their own extraordinary military competency and bravery to stop that invasion. And Putin had to retreat. There then was a counter offense by Ukraine that took back most of what Russia had conquered in the eastern part of Ukraine. The United States throughout all of that provided extraordinary military support as well as intelligence, and we've continued to do that for the last three years until two things happened. One thing happened a year ago when the Republicans in Congress refused to authorize additional funding for Ukraine. And there was a seven-month hiatus in which military supplies, munitions, ammunition, and as well as weapons were not sent to Ukraine. Ukraine thereby lost the momentum and moved from offense to defense. The fact is that Russia had ten times more artillery shells than Ukraine. Russia was able to fire ten. Ukraine only had one available, and in some cases, not. Why? Because the Republicans in Congress for seven months cut off those munitions. It was fortunately reinstated and backfilled by European countries who used their own arsenal of weapons, their depots, and they shipped that munitions and weapons to Ukraine during that hiatus. The United States was out of it. It was a terrible thing to do. You cannot lose your momentum if you expect to succeed. But Ukraine did, and to this day, that has been the defining question. Fortunately, the United States after seven months was, we forced the Republicans to relent and to allow for a continuation of the munitions, American munitions into Ukraine, and we authorized money necessary to replenish the American stockpile of munitions and weapons that was drawn down and given to Ukraine for their defense until Trump came to office. And what he did was 180-degree turn. America under Trump went from a supporter of Ukraine to a supporter of Russia. This was first seen in the United Nations, where the European countries wanted, European, Asian, and other countries around the world wanted a resolution condemning Russia for invading Ukraine, and there were other critical issues in that resolution. There was a counter resolution put forth by Russia and North Korea. That counter resolution said the war in Ukraine is the fault of Ukraine, not Russia. The United States at the United Nations did 180-degree and voted for the Russian resolution and voted no on the European and other nation resolution that would condemn Russia for invading Ukraine. The factual situation is perfectly clear. It was Russia that invaded Ukraine, beginning in 2014, and then carrying on to the massive invasion three years ago. Recently, in an effort to push towards a peace agreement, Trump threatened and actually stopped military support, equipment, munitions for Ukraine. That was about almost a three-week period of time in which those munitions and weapons were stopped. The good news is that Europe backed them to a point where Europe now is providing more support to Ukraine than the United States. We're about $127 billion of support. Europe is over $145 billion of support from all of the European and NATO countries in Europe. So where are we going to go from here? Oh, did I mention also that Trump stopped all intelligence sharing? A critical, absolutely critical piece of support that we were giving to Ukraine. You know, where are the, what's happening on the front? Where is the troop movements? Where is the logistical support? All of that was largely available through America Intelligence gathering, and we shared it with Ukraine. Trump shut that down. Now, my understanding is today, as a result of the negotiations that took place in the last three days in Saudi Arabia, where a proposed thirty-day ceasefire was accepted by Ukraine, but not yet by Russia, that the intelligence sharing as well as the munitions are now once again moving along. But my underlying concern here is, where's Trump going? Moving from a supporter of Ukraine to a supporter of Russia is a fundamental shift, one that plays havoc with the success or failure of Ukraine to maintain its own country, to maintain their democracy. It is a major question, and it will have serious, serious repercussions in NATO. NATO was established shortly, shortly after World War II and has been the most successful mutual defense pact ever, ever in history of anywhere. And it has basically, together with some UN and other American proposals to establish democracy, liberal government, and the rule of law, has maintained peace in Europe until Russia invaded Ukraine. So for more than since the end of World War II until just three years, well, three years ago, basically, those programs maintained the peace. I have a very, very serious concern that Trump wants to destroy NATO. He certainly tried to do it in his first term by, in multiple ways, and he seems to be back at it again. If he does that, then the, there is a significant risk of the Ukraine invasion also going into other countries, particularly the Baltic countries, Estonia, Lithuania, Lithuania, and perhaps other areas also. So this is a very, very important moment, and unfortunately, we have a president that doesn't recognize the extraordinary value of NATO as a peacekeeping entity and the role of America in all of this. Next question.
Thank you, Congressman, and we only have about 20 minutes left, so we'll try to go through these, and I'm going to cut these questions a little bit shorter. But I do have to say, right after complimenting our town hall audience, we received a question from an audience member saying, why don't Democrats in Congress hold town hall meetings in areas where Republicans are afraid to participate? I think if Democrats want to listen to it, it would do a lot to defeating MAGA.
Well, one question, one very pertinent question on that is that we can only do town halls in our own district that are funded, as is this one, by the Congress. So we could do town halls on our own in other congressional districts. And in fact, some of that is happening, and where, I'm thinking of Maryland. Two nights ago, one of our, no, it was Wisconsin, excuse me. One of our members went to the far, far end of his district, which is about a day Republican district, and did a town hall right on the border and had, and was able to get the story out. The Republicans are now refusing to do town halls. I'm doing this by video because we have to stay here in Washington for the reasons I talked earlier about with the continuing resolution and the funding of government.
Thank you, Congressman, and the next question is about our national parks. It asks, how have the firings made them vulnerable to being privatized, closed, or open mining or closing to the public? Why are they attacking a revenue-positive organization in the US government with 330 million people visiting a year from all over the world?
One word, stupidity. There's no answer to just gross stupidity. This is Elon Musk with his chainsaw just ripping through every government program without understanding what the program is. And not really, not even caring what it is. He's looking for numbers. You know, how many people can he cut down with his chainsaw? And he's going after every single federal department. I had the pleasure, extraordinary experience of being the Deputy Secretary Number Two in the Department of Interior, National Parks, Bureau of Land Management, all of those programs. They are extraordinary, and the people that work there are so dedicated, and they're not going to be there. So yes, this is a major challenge. Hopefully, some, I don't know, I'm almost, I'm not giving up hope. I'm just in a fighting mood here. My, my hope is that we can fight successfully and restore some of these cuts. That'll depend upon Musk and his chainsaw getting out of the way. But right now, it's stupidity and just a total lack of knowledge and no, and just not caring, just looking for the numbers.
Thank you, sir, and we had many of these in the chat, but I'm going to read from Christina G. Many in our LGBTQ community are terrified. We are worried. We are worried about our trans neighbors, and I'm personally worried about the courts overturning my marriage. What can we do? It's feeling hopeless in the United States right now.
Fight vigorously, in any way possible. Certainly, me and other members of Congress, let us know your concerns. Get on the street with your signs wherever it's appropriate, a healthcare center, clinic, and, and show your dismay and your concerns with, in signs, and then get those on social media. They add up. Work in Republican districts, and I mentioned three of them in Northern California. I didn't go further south, Valadale, in this southern San Martin Valley area, as well as Bakersfield. So reach out to them. Find the constituents, friends in that area that share your concerns, and have them call, have them go to the office, in front of their offices with signs. Do it properly. Don't break the law, no violence, just stand in the appropriate place on the street, excuse me, on the sidewalk, and, and show your dismay and your concern. Secondly, well, I get a little political here. There's an election coming up, and there are organizations that are preparing to push back. Indivisible is one. There are other organizations out there. Join on, join a club. Maybe it's a Democratic club, maybe it is a nonpartisan club that's interested in the, that particular issue, the LBGQ plus issue, and join that club. And power comes in numbers, number of people, the number of protesters, the number of telephone calls made to the various offices. We love to hear from you. We have probably continuing to receive a couple thousand calls, emails, and other communications a day. It was probably twice that two weeks ago. But that's good. We want to hear from you. But there's something, I was talking to one of the preachers, ministers some while ago, and he said, oh, I love my church. I love my church. I give a sermon in the morning, and the choir sings so loud. Well, yeah, that'll make a minister happy. Makes me happy when I talk to people and they're applauding, but I got to go talk to the sinners. I've got to go talk to those people that are not understanding and willing to, to join in the fight to restore these necessary services, as well as the, the rights of every American to be whatever they want to be and to have access to whatever opportunities that are out there. So maybe a couple of practical suggestions.
Thank you, Congressman. And we have a whole lot of questions about Doge and Musk, so I'm going to lump a couple of them together. Astrid Barbara and Gary asked, is Doge a legal government entity? What can be done to rid the government of Elon Musk? And what protections do people have from him harvesting private data like social security numbers, bank information, et cetera?
Boy, that's fundamental. I'm going to take these in two pieces. First of all, I just spoke about, you know, getting involved in protesting. Multiple ways to do that. I won't go through all that again, but I want to bring that back up. It's important. You must do that. Secondly, the legal ramifications. For them, as near as we can tell, the lawsuits that have been filed, mostly by individuals or organizations that have been hacked, excuse me, cut by the Musk chainsaw technique, have been successful because they are contrary to the law, to the appropriation specificity, and to the processes of government. A very quick segue here, back to my days as Deputy Secretary. Clinton and Gore put together what they called reinventing government, and they called the deputies in and said, okay, you're going to reinvent your government. Patty was at the Peace Corps. She got the same message. We want you to make it more efficient, more effective, and if possible, we want you to reduce the cost of your programs. We did that at the Department of Interior. Patty did that at the Peace Corps successfully. We reorganized, we took the time to understand what the programs were, how they were functioning, and how they could be more effective and efficient. We actually downsized 10%, 10,000 fewer workers, and then we worked diligently to make sure those workers had other jobs in the government and other areas that we're actually expanding. It can be done, and the law provides for it. That law's in place today. We used it 25 years ago, and the law is still in place. That's how you do these things, thoughtfully, no stupidity, understanding the programs, figuring out how it can be done. So the process that Musk and Trump are using is illegal. They are not using the reorganization laws that have been on the books for about 60 years now. And therefore, they're operating in an illegal methodology. That's lawsuits. We have to fight back in Congress as we are faced right now with the question, should we give him even more power? Eliminate the illegality, just say you have the legal authority to do these things. And my answer is no, no way, no how. So right now, we're relying on the courts. Now, I'm busily looking and working with my Republican colleagues in Congress who I know are dismayed by all that has happened, who I've worked with now for these years and said, and they, they know better, but they, but they fear. They fear the $100 million that Musk has put up to take out any Republican that breaks rank in a primary. They're going to primary him. $100 million is sitting out there, hanging over their head, and they're frightened. And my take on it is, this isn't the greatest job in the world, and we have a responsibility. So get about carrying out your responsibility. I will say, I've not been successful in turning any of them yet, but I will continue to work on. I know my other colleagues are also. We'll see what happens here. It's very, very important that we push back on these things.
Thank you, sir. And we have a question from Mariki F., and she asks, what can you do to protect universities' federal funding while preserving their right to teach whatever they choose to teach and protect them from federal retribution?
There's the, the short term here and now, and then there's the long-term issue I've worked with the universities. I was a Regent when I was Lieutenant Governor and also a trustee of the state universities. They're extraordinary systems, and the research that's conducted there is so important to all of us, the medical research, the energy research, on and on. What is happening right now is that the Trump administration is restricting how the money, first of all, whether money will flow at all, and if it does, how that money will be used. Now, a research facility, a research program, in most cases, we fire, requires a facility. You got to have a lab, and you've got to have the support for that lab. That, that doesn't come free. The researcher and the others that are researching, we think of that, well, that's what they do, yes, but they do it someplace. And maybe that place is in the Congo, looking for Ebola and other diseases that might emanate from that area or any other part of the world. And that takes money to support it. You might call it overhead, you might call it infrastructure. It is. But what's happening is that that amount of money that's available for that is in the process of being seriously cut. And therefore, the, the facility necessary for the research is going to either not be available or be significantly diminished, as well as the total dollars available. So there's a combination of two things here. Will the research money continue to flow? In some cases, no, particularly if it's research that has anything to do with diversity, equity, inclusion, LBGQ plus issues, or programs that deal with the role of minorities in the, in government, in education, or just in the workforce. So this research, it may be social, it may be medical research, it may be energy research, but there's a very serious cut coming, both in the, the programs themselves, as well in which the funding will be allocated between the, the basic foundation, the facilities, and the researchers. Once again, this is what is called stupid, not taking the time to understand how the research programs actually are funded, as well as what they are for. And so we're troubled. There was announced today that the National Institute of Health, the senior, I'm going to call it Chief of Staff, that basically runs the day-to-day programs, comes out of Tom Massey's, Representative Tom Massey, an extreme conservative. She has absolutely no experience in the medical research, so she's going to be the, the person that runs the day-to-day operations for the National Institute of Health and will probably be told by Trump and Musk, carry out what Garamendi just said shouldn't happen. We're very, very concerned. Also, the Science Foundation, as well as other funding sources for research. Long ago, I said, if we're going to have a good economy and a just society, you've got to have the best education in the world. You've got to have research on all subjects so that you're ready for tomorrow, ready for the challenges that are going to be coming, and then using that research to not only generate economic growth by carrying out the programs that are available, for example, energy, but also to address the problems that are going to be forthcoming. Those are fundamental, and Trump is going exactly the other direction.
Thank you, Congressman. And unfortunately, we only have maybe two minutes left, so I'm going to try to sneak in two quick questions. But as a reminder to folks, feel free to go to our website, garamendi.house.gov and hit Contact Us, and you'll get a response from our staff. Sir, we had a few questions about Israel and their offensive campaign in the Gaza Strip. The question asked, would you, do you support offensive weapons being shipped to Israel? And then would you support the UN Relief and Works Agency?
Well, first of all, with the UN, absolutely. Famine, medical issues are endemic in Gaza, and they need, the people in Gaza need support. They need food, they need medical supplies and the rest. I've been very clear from the early days of this conflict that the kind of weapons that have been used in Gaza are totally inappropriate. And I've voted and held the position that certain weapons should not be given to Israel, for example, the 2,000-pound bombs, whose only purpose is to destroy large portions of a city block. And I've made that clear. That's been my position for more than a year, and I maintain it today. Now, simultaneously, Israel needs weapons to continue to be able to support its position in a very, very dangerous part of the world. I'm very unhappy with what they have done in Gaza. We would hope that, that the efforts to achieve a...